Very tight timeline, like Wednesday to Friday.
Friday is what we would anticipate so that we would have the full following week to make adjustments as needed because we start school the following week.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
Is it, does it remain an annual commitment?
It's a first semester commitment at this time.
First semester, okay.
And if I could just, I also want to remind parents, if they are interested and they're not in our district yet, or haven't enrolled and they're resident of our district, in order to be part of this, they have to enroll in the district, even if they're open enrolled, they can't just say, well, I want to be part of that. They have to enroll in the district and go through both the open enrollment process and our regular enrollment process so that they can be part of this as well. So they can't skip those pieces. So if they are interested, it's great, please enroll in the district.
And MDE did give us an update last Thursday afternoon, late, or Friday morning, early, regarding open enrolled students can be included in our Laker online offering.
So, just as a clarification to that, they always could be, as long as they were in the district by a certain date, but now they can be at any point.
Okay.
So even if they enroll today and open enroll today, they can still be part of that where they couldn't previously.
Just say that was a change.
That was a change last week, last week.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on that? All right. You're up again.
For the next item?
Yep.
And invite Mr. Oak up as well. The APAC non-concurrents that we received, that you received as a school board on July 12th, you received in your packet for tonight's meeting, a memo from Mr. Oak and myself laying out the steps that we've taken since that time. And once again, as a reminder, we had 60 days to complete our response, so that puts September 12th as the deadline, so our intent would be to bring forward the response to the non-concurrents from the school board for action at the November, I'm sorry, September 8th meeting. And in your packet, in addition to the memo describing the steps that we've taken thus far, inclusive of getting, having the opportunity to sit down with six of the seven board members that were able to meet with us and talk more about that response, you have a draft for your consideration, so. I guess we're open to take any feedback so we can fine tune that prior to September.
Thank you. And I do appreciate, I think you went back for the last two notes, really, I mean of what?
Yeah, we provided in the, in our response, in the response that we're asking you to forward on, sign off on is the record of the last two non-concurrent agreements and the steps that the district has taken, as well as the steps that we would continue to take.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that, appreciate the time that you spent with us too.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
I was just going to say, I, again, yes, appreciate the time that you spent with each of us, I read through it this afternoon, I, it seemed consistent, you are directly addressing all of the things that they have brought up over the past multiple years, like you said, I feel really good about it, there's, I didn't even find a comma that I wanted to get rid of.
We can thank Kristi for that.
Any other comments?
I'll just make a comment too, thank you for making time to visit with us, and I really feel like it wasn't just a checklist you went through and we're just going to say this, I feel like you spent some time building some relationship and really listening, and what I took away from our meeting was a commitment to continue to do that. Both our liaison and the person who works with the district are incredible, strong forces and advocates, and the fact that you're working to build those bridges and listen to those voices, I think is going to help us move forward, so I just want to, want to thank you for involving and then taking these in sort of a more personal way, moving forward, so.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, with that is the technology levy.
Good evening Chair Ruel, Dr. Stala, and members of the board, good to be here with you tonight. A little over a month ago, you approved a resolution to authorize a technology levy on the November 2nd ballot, and since that time, the communications offices have been working to put together some factual information for our public so that they can make an informed decision on November 2. So tonight, I'd like to just go over with you some of the information that we have put together, and that starts with introducing you to the website information, including our district logo, which you see there. So anytime you see the district logo that is combined with this technology levy logo, that means you're going to find referendum information. So when you go to our website, when you go to the homepage, when you hover over about us, if you go to any school homepage, you'll see this logo and it'll take you to this page. So this is where you'll find quite a bit of information, starting with information materials. You see there is a fact sheet, looks like this, you have this at your board place. This is a two-page document that has a little more detail for people who like more information. Then we also have some quick facts, this we call our bookmark, or kind of a quick fact, condensed version of the fact sheet, that has been translated into Somali, Spanish, Russian, and Vietnamese as well. We also have a sample ballot, so we have the verbiage that stakeholders will see on their ballot and what that means, because sometimes, sometimes some of that verbiage can be confusing and we don't have a say in exactly how it's worded on the ballot, so this can help people walk through what that means. Also, we have an absentee ballot application available, so if people want to absentee vote, they can do that. And then we also have the original referendum announcement that we made last month. In addition, on this website, there's some voting information, so that, again, people can see a sample ballot there, there's some polling information, early voting in person, if people want to vote by mail, all of this is available for people to peruse. Also, we have the tax impact, we worked with Aylers and Associates to do a sample of estimated home values as, and then what that would be annually and monthly for cost. We also put together, or Aylers put together, a tax impact calculator, so people can go in and directly put in their home value to see what the exact tax impact would be. And then we started off with some frequently asked questions, we, to be honest, have not had a lot of questions so far, but this page will evolve as we get more questions and hopefully be able to help people with some of that. And we also have an information session coming up October 12th, there's a dedicated email line people can send emails to, and we also have a dedicated phone line if people want to call and talk to somebody about it. So that's just kind of a quick overview. I shared with you the toolkit that we have on our website, and just would like to briefly share the timeline with you to show how we're going to be using that information and communicating it out. This coming Monday, August 30th, we'll have a site team training, and this is predominantly for our teams who will be using this information to help us spread the word about the facts about the referendum. We have a back-to-school kickoff September 2nd, and Dr. Stala will be sharing the video at that time. September 8th, your school board meeting, we will be sharing the, what we lovingly refer to as our referendum roadshow, our presentation that Dr. Stala will be sharing with lots of different stakeholders in the community, civic organizations, staff, parents, et cetera. September 17th, early voting starts, Fall Fest, we'll probably have those quick facts to hand out there. We have a state of the district presentation that is a virtual livestream event that will have all the latest happenings in the district and also some tech levy information as well. The Laker Connections District Newsletter just went to print, it'll be hitting mailboxes around September 1. Community Education was kind enough to give us a full-page spot in their catalog for tech levy information. And as I mentioned, September and October, that's going to be when there's going to be lots of presentations happening in the buildings and around the community, we'll have social media posts around that time as well, and e-newsletters, and then, yep, and then we will have, the superintendent has a column in the local newspaper, we'll have that probably in October, and then Election Day is November 2. So that's kind of a quick, obviously, the communication plan is much more lengthy than that, but I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of what we have to date and where you can find the information. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
And once I get my schedule of all of the presentations set, I would love to send it out to you and would welcome you to join us on any of, with any of those meetings. So we're getting them, we're getting them, I think most of the staff have been set, many of the civic organizations have, and parent meetings, but we'll get that hopefully in the next week or so finalized.
It's coming along.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is the shelter lease agreement.
This is more of information for you, but we do have a repeater that helps in our district-wide with all of our radios, that's moving and is now going to be under the county. We do have a lease with them, which you will see in the presentation, I've reviewed it, Jim and I have looked at it as well, it's a very small dollar amount, $100 per year, but it is a longer-term lease, and so I just wanted to bring it to the board for your information, because that's what we do, we want to make sure that you're aware that that's what the district is doing. Any questions about this, it's just a really quick update. So we'll be bringing that to the board meeting for your approval.
September 1.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, there's no governance this evening, superintendent relations, anything tonight?
Nope.
Informational items, none, okay. And then next up is the public forum section, and for tonight, so in accordance with Board Policy 203, we have this 15-minute time period set aside to receive citizen input for tonight. During our board study sessions, we do allow public comment on just items on today's agenda. So we do have, I think, a number of, I think I counted eight. So with that being said, I'm going to allow two minutes per speaker to try to keep close within the 15 minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules will lose their privilege to speak. Board members will listen respectfully to presenters but will not engage individuals during this time. The board will not deliberate or take action during this section or regarding the issue presented. If follow-up is needed, the superintendent or designated will get back to you. The vice chair is going to have a yellow card with 15 seconds that she'll put up with 15 seconds left, and then the red will, will be posted when you need to stop. If you could, when you come to the board and I call your name, if you could just please state your name and just your relationship to the district. Okay, first up is Anna Brunson.
How do you mail to us?
Nope. Just your relationship, like parent or?
Oh, I'm a parent of three, pre-K to five. I had a whole thing prepared for tonight, but to me, it's clear you guys have already made a decision, so reading that does me no good, you've already decided what you're going to do. I would ask that, I have some questions that I would like to ask regarding the plan that you have in place with masking, I'm wondering if there are going to be exemptions to this masking. I have three children with asthma, two of which are from sustained lung damage from viruses they caught at school, RSV and pneumonia, both spending multiple days in the ICU from that. So it's clear that it's, you should have been considering this long before just COVID, and COVID is no different. In fact, COVID had only killed three people, or three children, under the age of 18 in Minnesota in the last 18 months, RSV killed 100% more than that. I just want to make sure that there's going to be an option for exemptions for my children who will either be left to choose between being educated at home by themselves in front of a computer, or not being able to breathe. I would like to make sure that you guys have some sort of exemption for kids in place that can still attend in-person education and not be required to wear masks due to medical needs. I'm sorry, I'm just looking to see if there's anything else in my notes here. I think that's pretty much, just wanting to make sure that you guys are giving exemptions to, I also have a child on IEP, which requires you legally to provide them with an education that is equitable to everybody else's. I did see a lot about inclusion and equity in your slides previous too, I would say that requiring all children to attend school in masks is not very equitable when it's not an option for all students. Thank you.
Anna, I would just ask if you could just either put a phone number or email, and then we'll make sure we'll get your answers. Kristin Dolan?
Hi, my name is Kristin Dolan, I am a parent of three children in the Prior Lake District, I have an elementary age going into third grade, although you can take her off that list now because she will not be attending if she is forced to wear a mask. We have, we toured multiple private schools today that have assured me that it would be parental choice whether or not the children wear masks. And I also have a seventh grader, or, sorry, he's going to be an eighth grader with autism and epilepsy, and he really, really doesn't want to wear a mask, and I could probably get a medical exemption for him, but he has spent his whole life feeling like he's different, and he will wear a mask rather than feel like he's different, even though medically he could get an exemption. And then I also have a junior in high school who will continue to attend school, even though he has asthma and could also get a medical exemption, but wants to just toe the line, and he also plays varsity soccer and doesn't want that taken away from him. I did prepare something, and I also think it's pointless at this point, because I think you guys have decided what you're going to do as far as masks, but I will read it because I spent a lot of time on it. I'm not here to tell a story, I just wanted to share some relevant pediatric COVID data as food for thought as you carefully consider how to vote regarding a mask mandate. All this data is pulled from either the CDC or the MDH. The public health person mentioned earlier about the increase in percentage of children with COVID, that statistic is 100% explained by the decrease in people over the age of 65. So just for a math example, say you have 100 people with COVID, 90 of them were 65 and older, 10 of them were kids, 90% 65, 10% kids. Well, they're vaccinated, so now the next week, you have 20 people 65 and older with COVID, and now same 10 kids with COVID, now your percentage is 66 and 33. So that is not a statistic you want to go with. Also, it was mentioned that sixth to eighth graders don't have the choice for the vaccine, they absolutely have the choice for vaccine. I also would challenge you to look at the case numbers for teens versus zero to four-year-olds and five to nine-year-olds. Total cases for 15 to 19-year-olds is 51,000, for five to nine-year-olds, it's 21,000. So your elementary-age kids account for a very small percentage of that.
Sorry, Kristi. So. Thank you.
Sub Dina Ross?
My original question was answered, so I'd like to save that.
Okay. Julia?
Ash. Thank you for your time, my name is Julia Ash, and I'm here holding the line for my children, both in elementary. Before my question, I want to say, you have a majority of parents here who have followed the data, we've collectively weighed the risks and benefits of sending our children to school, we've considered the facts and the data around COVID and masking, including a large-scale Cleveland Clinic study specific to natural immunity, and I haven't heard any of you talking about that data tonight. The real data shows that it's a minuscule risk of death for our kids. We're aware that those who may be at higher risk have either chosen to receive the vaccine or had access to the vaccine if they felt that was their ticket for protection. You keep saying that the kids will have access, until the kids have access to a vaccine, they need to be masked. We've read the inserts from the manufacturers that state they do not prevent the spread or contraction of COVID-19, all three of the vaccines. They're clearly evidently shown, as we're seeing in India, on fully vaccinated cruise ships, and as recently as St. Martha's Vineyard. I'm speaking to these facts because Prior Lake schools are not hospitals, our kids are not patients, we aren't holding you or our schools accountable to make medical decisions on our behalf as parents. Those are our decisions to make and should be at the discretion of each family member. Stacy, you and I have a station on the phone, which you said Prior Lake Savage School District is 8 million in deficit for this year. My question to the board is multifaceted, how much funding will this district receive, and from whom to mandate masking and/or weekly COVID testing? And secondly, how much more are you willing to lose if we pull our children? We're eager to hear your responses.
Mo?
All right, my name is Ryan, I am a father of two, I know this is an open discussion, but it seems very wishy-washy, which is, you've said yourself many times, and, but I want to talk to Dr. Terry, you know, you talk about a staff shortage, but at this point, everybody has had the opportunity to be vaccinated, as she said, so I don't even see that being an issue. You guys seem to be speaking to a lot of hypotheticals, but here, I'll read my story and facts and just go off that real data, so. All right, hello, I can stand up here and report back to you, real statistics, real science about COVID, and such is how 99.995% of children who get COVID will survive. The automobiles are 12 times more likely to result in death, the flu, seven times, pools, 12 times, heart disease, two to four times, or maybe the most alarming thing, that suicide accounts for seven times the number of deaths because of declining and, quite frankly, crippling mental health that masks and lockdowns have brought on to our children. In all, 140 children under the age of 14 across the country have died from COVID over the entire course of the pandemic, so over a year and a half. According to the Heritage Foundation, and this was less than a month ago, I could share to you how homeschooling is up four or five, maybe six times normal rates. I'm not sure how a loss of roughly 1,000 students would impact the money and spending, but I'm guessing a great deal. Instead, I'll share my story about my six-year-old who attends. First, I understand a lot of us, this, a lot of this, this debate is exactly the point, every parent should be allowed their opinion, should be able to make decisions for themselves and their children, to me, this isn't about politics. After listening to both sides, as well as my children, I do believe there should be a choice. My boys, six and 10, were very upset about wearing masks for eight-plus days.
Sorry, Ryan.
I could see it 100% affect, I saw a yellow sign, I have 15 seconds.
I was trying to get your attention.
Okay, well, I'll just wrap up and then just five seconds.
No, I'm sorry, we're done.
I can see it affecting, not to say, they can have to credit the education and sort of love, loving your school.
We're done.
It seems like the complete opposite of what a school should want.
Ryan, we're done.
My kids don't have the confidence to speak up, my child has a hearing problem, and masks make it work, and, last point I'll make is, I've heard from a lot of teachers saying that they're ready to retire. Very complex issue, it's affecting a lot more than.
Natalie?
I think, says Natalie. And I just want to reiterate, you're going to talk levy, correct? Levy, okay.
Well, and I'm adding something else too.
Well, wait, 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 it has to be on the agenda, I just want to make sure.
Yep, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
My name is Natalie Barnes, I'm a mom of four kids in Prior Lake. I just want to actually address two things, first of all, you were talking about the levy for technology, I am very concerned that there is no accountability on this board for the amount of money that you spend over and beyond budgeted funds, and now we're $29 million short on the last levy. So I did not vote for levy, and the reason is, is there needs to be accountability, $29 million from our taxpayer pockets that could be used for something else, and I do not want the technology budget to be actually taken out and paying for your deficits. I am a nurse, and by the way, I'm a frontline nurse, I actually take care, anybody here actually take care of a COVID patient, a positive COVID patient? Let me tell you, the numbers are lying. I work in a hospital, I was charge nurse the other day, and the only mask that we should actually be putting on anybody is, if you really want a mask, if you really want protection, are fitted N95s. If we ever go into a COVID room, if we ever go into a COVID room that is a COVID-positive room, we have to have proper PPE. So if you're really sitting here saying we need to have masks on our children, then you need to fit test all your teachers and all your children for N95s, because that is the only thing that is actually up to the standards of science. So literally, all of this talking about masks, these little paper diapers everybody has on their face, unless you are fit tested, this is absolutely ludicrous to be putting this on anybody in these schools. So you're. And what happens when they're wet? Yeah. So is that 15 seconds?
You got about.
Yeah. Okay, so this is it, guys, I'm telling you what, affect them by the bottom line, the dollar. You want budget, take your kids out of the schools, honestly, that'll affect the budget. Furthermore, I will tell you, there is, there's not enough staff in the hospitals, and if you're talking about teachers and not enough teachers staffing your schools, the reason why our numbers are, we're full, is because there's not enough staff, and that will be in the district as well.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Buckingham, I am a parent of three, I guess only two are school age now, because one is flying my nest in a couple weeks. It's so much to think about and so much to ask, but my understanding of how this worked, and I guess I maybe am, is that this was a, we ask questions, we get responses, is that not how this works? Not how it ever works? Because I feel like as parents, we have asked, we have emailed, and we get form responses, we get very little honesty. If you, and that is frustrating for all of us, that we just aren't being respected with our thoughts, and we just pour our hearts out in this, in questions to all of you, and we get, uh, thank you for blah, 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 it's just a form, we can feel that, we know that. So my question to you is, you are requiring children to wear masks, and we know that that was coming, exemptions, there have got to be exemptions, and there cannot just be medical exemptions, it has to be, I don't want to wear a mask, period exemption. You want equity, you're telling your kids that they should have a voice in their schools, listen to them, allow them to. Follow the science is what I keep hearing, but all of these statistics aren't following science, the schools, there are schools, we can look at Texas, we can look at Florida, there were schools that went maskless all last year, and that shows that there was no incidence, the unmasked schools versus the masked schools. no incidence. The unmasked schools versus the masked schools were nearly equal in absences, in illnesses. And in fact, the maskless schools fared a little better than the masked schools. So let's look at all the data, not just pick and choose what will, if you want masks, but there's equal numbers that say masks are harmful to our kids for health reasons, for mental reasons, for so many reasons. So if you're going to do this, you need to have a clear exit strategy, and you need to provide exemptions for any reason whatsoever.
Next up is Amy.
Amy? Hi, my name is Amy Bullion. I am a mother of a senior and a freshman at the Prior Lake High School. I feel like I should be talking about masks, but my question that I post, that I wrote down was regarding to the use of pronouns. Why, I'm curious, why the faculty and staff are using pronouns, what advantage that is, what reasoning it is, and why students are asked to choose, choose pronouns. How is that positively affecting them? And what is the purpose? That's my question.
Well, there is no back and forth. Well, what I would say to that, Amy, is you have your phone number, and what I, I'll have Dr. Stallow have, get back to you with the question. He can tell you when we let her know. You want to answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say that, and this is not just in our school district, I think if you look at businesses that are around, there's, we're at a place where preferred pronouns, people choose to share those in part to ensure that we've got inclusive environment and we're not assuming, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to be done because they don't want to listen.
Okay.
The other thing that I'd like to answer, since I tried to answer that one, is there was a comment about overspend on construction, and that's inaccurate.
Yeah. Amy, are you?
I would be happy to clarify.
Is the pronoun, is my two minutes on pronouns, I'm?
Well, they interrupted.
Well, it started with you saying that you were going to call me and that I could respond to them.
Well, if they're going to be quiet.
But that's just sharing, that just is proof of how the school board works. So thank you for your time.
The construction.
The district passed $109 million bond referendum. But on top of that, they also approved, the school board also approved additional $20 million in additional long-term facility maintenance dollars that the district receives from the state in funding. For, as the district was working on other construction projects, the board approved those. Some of it also came from our Child Nutrition Services Department for additional kitchen needs that we had to build out those spaces. So there were additional approved expenditures over and above the $109 million, but we certainly work within budget for all of those projects.
All right. I think I did. All right. With that, I will adjourn the study session for this evening. Thank you.